Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled council meeting. Today is Thursday, February the 6th, 2025. The time is now seven o'clock PM, so we will call the meeting to order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Lee Peoples from Heights Baptist Church, and I'd ask Councilman Castro to lead us in the American Pledge, and Councilman Stark, if you'll lead us in the Texas Pledge, please. Please rise.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for today. Lord, we thank you for the way you love us and care for us. Father, I thank you, according to Acts 17:26, that you ordain the times and boundaries and places in which we live. And so, Father, I thank you that we are all here in Alvin and the surrounding communities for such a time as this. So, Father, I thank you for these men and women serving our city. I pray for tonight, that you would guide us and lead us as a community. Lord, give us wisdom where we need it. And Father, I just thank you ultimately for the gift of life that's found in your Son, Jesus Christ. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Councilman. Next, we will move into our presentations. We have a presentation of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, as awarded to the City of Alvin for fiscal year 2024-25. Good evening, Christopher.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to come up, continue with our transparency, let you guys know that we're doing the right job that we're supposed to be doing. We recently received notification that we would be winning the Distinguished Budget Award for the current fiscal year. This will be our 37th year in a row to win this award. I believe last time I was here, giving you guys an update on the ACFR, I did some research and found out we've actually won that one 43 years in a row. So, we're keeping it up here. One of the things that you'll notice on the list of winners is that some of our neighboring cities are not actually on that list anymore. I believe the city down the road gave up after I left. Haven't seen their name on that list for a while. This is what it looks like when they send it to us. They send us a little button every year. They used to only have 10 buttons on these. They're cheaping out and they're putting 15 buttons on them now. We've got the other three in the office somewhere over there. They're going to send us the shiny 2024 one. Just wanted to let you guys know, as I said, keep up with the transparency, and to let you know that we indeed are playing chess down here as well. We have a couple of grandmasters hanging out in the house, and we win these awards for it.
Thank you. That's fantastic work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we're going to have our EMS Emergency Management Annual Departmental Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we're going to do something a little different this time to keep in step with planning for the future and planning down the road. I'm going to have our Deputy EMS Director, Deanna Bray, present the EMS portion of the presentation, and I'll do the emergency management section. With that, I'll turn it over to Deanna.
Mayor and Council, thank you. So, for us, for our update, and if this is bad, it's Ron's fault. But it's his life. So, for us, just a rundown of what we have. So, 18 full-time staff members, that's including our admin. 22 part-time staff members, that fluctuates a little bit back and forth. We do, we have two mobile intensive care capable units that are running 24/7. We have another third unit that'll run seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for 12 hours. The only time that changes is during an emergency. We do community outreach, we do education services, we do Stop the Bleed classes, we've done some classes with city departments on some first aid training. We are a very popular training site for EMS education programs. We're currently contracted with three schools to have students come through. And we're an active member of the Task Force, Texas EMS Task Force. And then, so our call volume on my left is just our annual call volume over the last few years and how it's progressing. The one outlier is going to be that second one there, which is 2020, 2021, that's COVID year, so those numbers are not going to be super accurate. Well, they're accurate, but you can't reflect those to what's current. So, we increase 5% every year, average. And then, our destinations, we've got 10 or 11 different destinations that we'll transport to, including freestanding ERs along with other hospitals in the area. List of all of our hospitals that we transport to, in the Memorial Hermann system, the HCA, UTMB, and we have one that's a Methodist hospital, which is over in Clear Lake. And we keep them busy. So, our response area is this, right? So, our average time, from the time we get a call to the time we get on scene, our response time average is 8.3 minutes. Our average on-scene time with our patient is going to be 19.8 minutes. Once we get transporting, depending on where we're going, emergency traffic or non-emergency, it's going to average to 21.2 minutes. We spend about an average of 33.7 minutes at the hospital, just transferring patient care, giving report, getting ready for the next call so that we can return to service. And so, all in all, average call total time is going to be 83.4 minutes. So, yeah, we're out there a lot. So, for our staff, to kind of go back to that a little bit, seven ENTs, one of those is our administrative assistant, eight paramedics, including Ron and I, three paramedic supervisors, these are all full-time staff. And then, our part-time staff is going to be 15 ENTs and seven paramedics. Again, that fluctuates with our people coming and going. Over 300 training hours that we do on average per year within the department and outside the department. So, we do in-house training. One of our supervisors is our clinical manager, and so he schedules training, we do EVOC training, we do outreach, we go to public service events, schools, things like that, just getting out there, teaching people things, or having them come to the station, and we train them there. Medical minutes, yeah, sorry. So, medical minutes, we do that, we meet once a month with our medical director, and we'll do some training with him as well. And so, "Be nice, be helpful" is our motto, and Ron stresses that, right? So, he always has, and we do, and that's just a reminder for all of our people, all of our staff. I'm sorry. I violated that rule already. So, that's just a reminder, like, no matter where we're at, right? Just in public, on a call, wherever, getting coffee, getting groceries to cook dinner, or whatever, just to be nice, be helpful. And we do that. All of our crews really do enjoy serving the public, serving our community, and so they enjoy getting the one-on-one, right? The National Night Out, the Open House, things like that. They like that when it's not an emergency, and they get to spend time with people. And that's it. Oh, I will point out, he doesn't have it on here, but the very bottom picture, the two ladies there with the award, we just recently received that award from Angleton EMS for our help with their trailer collapse back in September. And so, they recognized our crews for the good work that they did, and so, yeah, we got a good group of people. Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay. When you said that a lot of time the part-timers, kind of that number fluctuates, what do you think is the main cause of that fluctuation?
So, sometimes it's just, it's schooling, right? So, it's, I'm in an EMT school, I'm going to go to paramedic school, sometimes it's family issues. It varies widely.
Okay.
So, as soon as they move.
So, like, no point, like, no specific reason?
I mean, no, there's a variety of reasons. But there's a variety of reasons, right? So, and it varies from person to person.
I guess mainly I'm asking, like, is there anything the city can do to make sure that that number is not fluctuating?
Well...
Switching to full.
Yeah.
And that's where we get most of our full-time staff, is from the part-time pool that we have. And so, a lot of our part-timers have full-time jobs other places, and they enjoy working here, say they live here, or they just like working in our department, or they just do it as kind of a PRN, as needed basis, while they're looking for a full-time position. We recently had one of our EMTs go through paramedic school, she gets her paramedic license, we don't have a paramedic opening, and so she recently has gone to, like, Jackson EMS is a full-time paramedic, she's going to stay on as a part-time paramedic, in hopes that we'll have a position open up. But, so it's kind of a fluid, they move through that part-time, full-time, here we are.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I noticed in your presentation that you were a training site. That always interests me, because that means that obviously our bar is up here. And so, when you're training other folks our way, that's great. We have that in other departments, legal department did that with some software, and you guys are doing that here, so I'd just kudos to y'all for doing that.
Yeah. They do really well, our staff does really well, training new people, students, and they enjoy it. They like to teach people how to be good at their job, and so, then they're good.
It's a good recruitment tool for us, as we get students from the colleges, come through as students, they see what we're about, they see our people, they see our operation, and they, most of them want to come to work here when they graduate, and so that's, we kind of recruit them as a student program, and then it's the part-time, and then we move them to full-time.
We get a lot of recruitment that way.
Sounds ideal. Good job.
Yeah. All right. And yours?
Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
So, it wasn't as bad as you thought?
No, not as bad.
All right. So, on to emergency management. So, emergency management duties, as you may or may not know, primary duties are to make sure that we have conducted surveys to gauge our risk assessment and do a risk analysis of what could happen to the city, and how to better prepare for those and mitigate those. We develop the emergency management plan, which is about a 640-ish page document that outlines how we're going to handle and work through emergencies, and we'll talk about that more in a little bit. Other job is to recommend to the emergency management director, which is the mayor by state law, and to the city manager on declarations for disaster and those types of implementations, coordinate training of staff, and to make sure that we're meeting all the local and state and federal requirements, particularly when it comes to like reimbursement from FEMA and that kind of thing. So, the hazard analysis is done every year. It's fairly simple, but we just look at, like, some of the major threats to our city, and that's, you can see a list of them, how we kind of break them out through natural, technological, and security issues, whether man-made or hurricanes, terrorist threats, that kind of thing, and we rate those on, whether they're likely, unlikely, very unlikely, that type of thing, and then what would those impacts be? And so, every year, we kind of look at that, and it does change slightly. You know, we used to not have winter ice storms, right? Not so much on the list. Now, it's there, right? Because we've seen those in the last few years, and those impacts. And so, we try to prepare for those and plan for those a little bit better. Our emergency management plan, it consists of a basic plan that outlines the authority and the organization of the emergency management system, command and control, and how we develop and manage the plan. And then, there's 22 annexes that go along with that plan, based on those different threats and responses. For instance, how we communicate, how we do shelter and mass care, law enforcement, fire prevention or fire response, hazardous materials, radiological emergencies. We just updated the radiological emergency annex last month. And so, the plans are reviewed every year, and they're required to be updated and submitted to the state every five years. And so, there's three different levels that the state considers are planning readiness, and it's the basic level, intermediate level, and advanced, and we currently operate at the advanced level. So, training is a big part of it. So, last year, we did three intermediate incident command courses in the city, and we did three advanced incident command courses in the city. We also partnered with TDM, the Texas Division of Emergency Management, and they came and provided us with some recovery and mitigation training for our staff. We did some iStat, pStat training that helps teach our staff and the public on how to do damage assessments with our phones. We partner with Homeland Preparedness Project, which is a nonprofit that's contracted with the county to provide community training, so we host community emergency response team courses that they provide, and we help teach portions of those with them. And then, we also try to update our emergency communications plans, either with our phone system, or with backup satellite radio and internet connections. And so, just in the last 13 months, really, the responses that emergency management has been, major responses that emergency management has done is, back in, if you, I didn't even remember it until I was looking back through our calendar and saw that we had emergency meetings over it, but we had a potential ice storm last year in January that we prepared for. Turned out not to be such an impact, but we went through the process. We also do it for our larger main events in the city, like Twitter Bras and Music Fest. We responded, obviously, to the Hurricane Burl, the December tornadoes, and then this last winter storm that we went through. And so, we use that emergency management plan often, and exercise the emergency operations center at least once a year. We usually try to do a training every year, and it seems like the last few years, the training has been bumped because of an actual event, so we haven't had to train. But it's always on our schedule at the beginning of every year. Alvin Alerts is how we communicate to the masses, to the public. We use the Everbridge Alert System that uses a reverse 911 system, where we can make a message, or either a voice message that we record, or type it in, and it converts it to a voice that goes out to the public in general. The system takes in all the known landlines, voice-over-IP lines, registered phone lines, and has that in the database already, but obviously, most people use cellphones now, and so, if you're not getting those alerts, that means your cellphone number is not in the system, and you should register and put your phone number in that system. And so, to do that, you can go to our webpage, at the very bottom, you can kind of see it there, circled in red, there's a little link that says Everbridge or Alvin Alerts, and you click on that and go to register. And then, it'll ask you for some information. You can pick what kind of alerts you get, whether you want to be notified if there's a Easter egg hunt, or if there's a tornado, right? You can select which ones you get. I would suggest you not get lightning alerts. In the summer, it goes off constantly, so don't do that unless you're going to be outside in an event or something, right? But that's the best way for us to notify the public quickly and effectively. It's automatically tied into the National Weather Service Alert System, and so, if there is a tornado alert for Alvin, we don't have to do anything. As soon as the National Weather Service issues that alert, it pushes that out to our phone system and alerts the public. The basic part of emergency preparedness is, it starts with us, right? It starts with you, it starts with me, it starts with our families. The better off we're prepared, the better off our community is prepared, the better off our city is prepared. If everyone has three to five days of food and water and medications, then we're set, right? We don't, there's a lot less that the public will need from us as a city and as a government to help them. And so, the better off the community is, the better off we are, and the better off everyone is. And so, it starts with us, being prepared, being ready. Everybody should have a plan, have a kit, and stay informed, right? And so, if you need help with that, the public or anybody can go to ready.gov, and they have a whole bunch of information in there that you can help to make a kit, make a plan, and just have a good common sense plan for your family. Any questions?
No questions?
Nope. Thank you.
No?
He's looking at me. I pre-warned him.
You were smiling.
Very good.
Thank you.
Love what y'all do. I know we work very closely together, me being in the county as well, but she kind of beat me. You let her do the EMS presentation, but I was going to say, congratulations on getting your pilot's license.
Oh.
And I was wondering if you were going to put a helicopter in your budget. But you put the picture right there.
Well, that's why I have had her come up and do the presentation, in case I get killed in a plane crash or something now, is that she can take over.
There you go.
You never know. You seen the news lately?
But it is good. I know you do a really good job, and all the way from Texas Division of Emergency Management to the county level, to the local level, it's always really good, positive comments that I hear about how emergency management, and especially EMS, how well y'all are doing. And I know y'all have taken care of me a couple of times on my fire scenes, where I come crawling into the station going, I need to get checked out, so y'all have done a really good job, very professional. Thank y'all for what y'all do.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Next, we're going to move into public comment. The first ones we have are from Ray Lewis and Amy Ordno. Would you please come forward?
Evening, Mayor. Evening, Council. We're your service provider, obviously, for your waste removal. Wanted to come by, introduce ourselves, and give you an update. Kevin Atkinson was the founder of Texas Pride. He has moved on to his next appointment and next for his future. He remains on our board, and wanted to come by and introduce myself as the Chief Operating Officer for Texas Pride, and then Amy Ordno, our Vice President of Municipal Markets. So, we wanted to say thank you for your business and being a business partner with us, and any questions you may have for us at this time?
You do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Any other comments?
Do you expect any changes with the transition?
Uh, no. No. We're going to status quo, that's part of it, you know, Kevin sold the company too.
You can't ask questions in public comment, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming to see us.
Thank you. All right. Have a good evening.
Yes, thank you.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but he just asked that, I was like, oh, right, it's public comment.
Next, we've got Suzanne Dilman.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here with Keep Alvin Beautiful. I'm the president, and I just wanted to bring y'all up to date what we got accomplished in 2024 and what our plans are for 2025. We did our dedication and the ribbon cutting for the new marquee on the corner of Gordon and Six. We celebrated the retirement of some of our previous staff members, and we dedicated a bench to them, and we gave them a reception. Excuse me. In 2025, we will continue doing Yard of the Month and Business of the Month, thanks to Patco for sponsoring us. AISD Welding Department is currently rehabbing our luggage cart that sits next to the depot. Hopefully, will be finished this spring. The caboose is getting settled into its new and permanent home. I want to say thank y'all for all of that. It was a monumental challenge. The Great American Cleanup is scheduled for May. Last year, we collected 6.7 tons of waste. This year, we would like to add tires and paint recycling. We will be also adding Arbor Day to the month of April to give away trees and seeds. The news project that we want to take on will take several years to get completed, and it's going to bring color and artwork to Alvin. We would like to start wrapping all the utility boxes at the stoplights. We hope to get your blessing on this, and Dixie is assisting us getting the project started. The city of Allen currently has six boxes, and TexDOT has 23. However, I see a lot more on the horizon, and I hope to have Alvin High School students do the designs for us. We're a small group, but we're a mighty group. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to consent agenda. Councilman Vail, anything you'd like to remove?
No, Mayor.
No, sir.
No, Mayor.
No, sir.
Can I get a motion?
Mayor, approve consent agenda.
Second.
Please vote.
No, it didn't. Oh, there we go. More. There it goes. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Items approved on the consent agenda are the minutes from the January 16th City Council Workshop, Item B are the minutes from the January 16th City Council Meeting, Item C, Resolution 25R03, calling and establishing the procedures for the May 3rd, 2025 general election in Alvin, Texas, and providing for other matters related thereto. Item D, approval of contract for election services with Joyce Hudman, the County Clerk, Brazoria County, Texas, for the May 3rd, 2025 general election, and authorize the mayor to sign upon legal review. Item E, approval of amendment to the construction phase contract with CSA Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $71,464,410.56 to provide construction manager at-risk construction phase services for the wastewater treatment plan expansion and improvements project, and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment upon legal review. Item F, consider a professional services agreement with Fries &amp; Nichols in an amount not to exceed $5,248,800 for the construction phase engineering services for the construction of the wastewater treatment plan expansion project, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review. Item G, consider an engineering services agreement with LJA Engineering in amount not to exceed $718,000 for the engineering design services for waterline improvements Phase 5 project, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review. Item H, consider a license agreement for the exclusive use of the city property between the City of Alvin and Alvin Sunrise Rotary Foundation for the Music Festival and Barbecue Cook-Off at Briscoe Park from March 24th, 2025 to March 30th, 2025, with the actual event scheduled for Friday, March 28th, 2025, at 10:00 AM through Sunday, March 30th, 2025, at 1:00 AM, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review. Item I, consider accepting the resignation of Santos Garza from the Planning Commission, and Item J, consider accepting the resignation of Michelle Vella from the Civil Service Commission. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to other business. Item A, we're going to consider Resolution 25R04, releasing and abandoning 0.0741 acre utilities located on property on County Road 171, South Johnson Street, south of FM 1462, for the Texas Department of Transportation State Highway 99 Road Project, and authorize the mayor to sign and release upon legal review.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we received a request for release of this easement. Michelle's here if we have further questions, but this is a former utility easement that the city no longer needs, correct? Would you say that? Correct. And so, the TexDOT is getting, is, they're obtaining an easement along 171 and 1462 for the State Highway 99 Expansion Project. And so, in order to do that, they have to be able, the owners of that property have to be able to give free and clear title. So, what this will do is, this will release and abandon our interest in that easement, giving it back to those owners, so then those owners can then give TexDOT the easement that they need for their project.
Very good.
And I think, did we put a map in? We'd gotten one to Dixie. It's on County Road 171, South Johnson Street, just south of 1462.
Just a quick little bit. It's right there on...
1462.
South Johnson, right where you get to 35, almost to the intersection. They're going to do detention on both each side of Johnson Street, so on the, kind of be on the... So on the, kinda be on the east, southeast side, there's, that's where this property is located. And we have a little easement, it was acquired in 2002 for, um, just as an easement roadway access, kind of a general purpose. I think the thinking was then that we may someday realign Johnson Street. Um, so I believe it, that property was a sheriff's trust sale or something. So usually when we see something like that, if we think we might use it in the future, we would go ahead and acquire it. Um, I'm thinking that's what happened, it was before my tenure, but it's not occupied now. I don't foresee any use for it. The better use would be to provide the detention for the Grand Parkway.
And, and my understanding also from the attorney is there will be another one of these coming? Um, and I, it's for the same project. I don't know if it's in the exact same area, but he was not aware of it at the time that he submitted all this information to me. Otherwise, we would have done it at the same time, but probably with the next couple of meetings or so, we should have, we will have another one of these.
So it wasn't, we don't own the property, we just have an-
We just have an easement.
We just have the easement. So the owners acquired it possibly by a sheriff's sale or whatever other means, and then we requested the easement.
Yes, correct.
My question, so if, uh, the intent is to possibly, I know this is a little bit outside of this, is, uh, for the detention ponds possibly for, for that project, do we know what TexDOT's plans are, where they have like a little lay-down yard just north of that area? Does that intend to like go away as the Grand Parkway is being built?
I don't know, at this time, I haven't looked at the plans in that much detail. Um, 'cause it was, the detention ponds were on separate property outside their current right-of-way, right there where Johnson ties in on each side of it. They have detention there, they're gonna have several areas along the bypass where they are acquiring property for detention.
Yeah.
For that whole road.
I mean, it's just, it's really good, um, commercial property in that area, so, and then with that road being built, that's, that's, would be good potential, um, commercial property that I see. I would assume TexDOT would have some look at that as well, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Uh, we entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution 25R04, releasing and abandoning a zero point, 0.0741 acre utility easement located on property on County Road 171, South Johnson Street, south of FM 1462, for the Texas Department of Transportation State Highway 99 Road Project, and authorize the mayor to sign their release upon legal review.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, consider if any requests from individual council members? No, sir?
Nothing at this time.
Very good. Reports from city manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, Coffee with the Cops will be hosted by the Alvin Parks and Recreation Center, a department, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, February 11th, at the Alvin Recreation Center from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Uh, city offices will be closed on February 17th, and on of President's Day, garbage collection will remain as normal schedule. Uh, those interested in running for an elected city council position in May, applications will be received through Friday, February 14th, at 5:00 p.m. Uh, and lastly, uh, this morning a vehicle struck a fire hydrant on East House, East House and bypass, uh, causing a water main break. Utility crews quickly isolated the leak, the repairs are now completed, and the water has been restored. So if you are experiencing, uh, discolored water, please contact the Public Services Department at 281-388-4325, or after hours, call 281-388-43704 systems. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Uh, items of community interest, Councilman Starkey?
No, sir.
Nothing, Mayor.
Well, with that, we are adjourned. It is 7:34 p.m.